The time is now 6:02. We will now call the special public meeting of the Board of Trustees of Umba Independent School District to order. Moving to our first item of business is closed session, and we will be back shortly. Time is now 7:28. We're going to reconvene this meeting into open session. Prior to going to workshop, we're going to discuss a couple of action items. Thank you for your patience as we work through a few things. And our first item, questions and comments by patrons. I don't believe we have any tonight. Is that correct? Okay, perfect. No action items from closed session, which brings us to item 5A, Umbalice D face covering protocols. Let's go here. All right. Do I have a motion? Do we...
To the board, they're welcome to make a motion of any kind in terms of it can be as broad as updating the face covering protocols to bring the item for discussion, or it can be limited if a board member has a particular recommendation they wish to make.
Okay.
I've got a motion.
All right, Mr. Lopez.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we update our mask protocol that we voted on several board meetings ago to the following. The first bullet point that formerly read, "Any person younger than 10 years of age." We update that to "Any elementary school student." Also, part of my motion is to update the fourth, fifth bullet point, to read "Any spectator or participant at an outdoor event or activity."
Okay, we have a motion.
For a second.
It's our second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much, Mr. Lopez and Ms. Toomey. All right, we're moving now to item number six, information items. This will be our budget workshop, and I will kick it straight over to our finance chair, Mr. Scarfo, and let you make some opening remarks and do your thing.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're just, everybody's got the information for this round, and I say that because we're going to be going through some more phases, as you all know. And just to the public, don't take any of this as being in stone. This is a point now where we're starting to get more into the detail. So the board members will have questions, and whether it's tonight or as we go along the way, because we have another budget workshop scheduled for towards the end of May. We have a finance committee meeting early May, that first week, so we'll be vetting some things there, too, to bring back to the board through our CFO and staff and Dr. Fagan. So I just preface that to remember that this is our first deep look as opposed to last time, but remember, this is really a moving target without a doubt, because you have to remember, too, in this session or this year, with legislators in session and things are not firmed up yet, so there's a lot of question marks. So our folks are trying to deal with all that and doing a great job to try to give us the most up-to-date information, but I've got to tell you, this is no easy task. So please bear with us and them, and we are going to try to get the best information to you and continue to update it, because we don't approve the budget till, we don't have to approve it till June 30th, but we're shooting for June 15th, and I think we'll make that date. So without further ado, I want to turn this over to Mr. Beatty, our CFO, and he will walk us through this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Scarfo. You saved me about five or six slides there, so we got a head start. So I do, you know, to reiterate that, it is a moving target. We have made a lot of progress, and so, you know, what we're going to go through is a lot more detail than last time, and they'll, you know, we'll still fine-tune that as we move forward. So when we're building the budget, we are keeping the district goals as a focus, and we're making sure that we are aligning our resources to those goals. And some, you can see the goal, safety, quality instruction, resource alignment, quality staff, and culture. We use a zero-based budgeting approach, and so it's not, you know, one of the approaches where you just apply a 2% increase across the board. Every dollar is really scrutinized and reviewed, and that ensures that there's a lot of intent and meaning behind those dollars. And how that kind of works is the campuses and departments review, make sure that they're only submitting what they can't fund within their existing budget. And then ultimately, that goes to district leadership for review and prioritization. Last year was, we are not in the same position as last year, although there is still some uncertainty with legislature, so we are watching that closely and that impact. But as far as how the budget was built last year in that process, we feel a lot more positive this year than we did last year. So, you know, just to look back a little bit, that's kind of how we landed where we did last year, and you'll see in future slides, we have a lot of carryforward capacity to start with this year, and this is kind of why. We really had no idea what was going to happen last year. So as far as building the budget this year, we are making a couple of assumptions. We are expecting growth, 1,000 new students. That could be more. You know, everyone probably feels in the area how hot the real estate market is, but we're planning for 1,000 new students. We are basing our projections off of current law, which makes it a little bit easier, but again, we're watching legislature to see if we need to tweak anything. And one thing unique to this year is reimbursement and extra funds available to help support with COVID costs, and so we'll get into that just a little bit. But I just want to highlight where we were in the mindset last year when we built the budget. We kept 14 million that we did not allocate to prepare for this year, whatever we may, however everything may have played out due to COVID. So what funds do we have available? You know, we're projecting about 450 million in total state and local revenue, and we really want to utilize that fund, those funds for recurring costs, staffing, and anything that is going to continue on year to year. And then, you know, there's one-time needs that come up, and, you know, we have a strong fund balance, and sometimes a fund balance can be a good use for those one-time expenses. So a little bit, just to highlight the unique situation we're in this year, and kind of, this is a bonus in addition to the one-time expenses category. ESER funds should become available. We don't know where that is really right this minute, but through the different federal legislation that has been passed, there are funds available for K-12 to utilize to address learning loss and get buildings in place to provide a safe environment due to COVID. So, you know, to highlight that, we maybe possibly $31 million in the final phase of ESER funds. So that brings us to the new year budget.
I'm sorry. If we just go back, just so it's clear on the slide before that. What we're really looking at, we don't know yet the state, what you mean by that, they may be just replacing funds. So, and because right away we thought, wow, boy, all these billions of dollars in these three rounds, and this last round is another big, big chunk of money, the ESER three. So we can't sit there and say, oh, this is great, look, we got, you know, right there, 15 million. Well, not really. It may just be a swap-out. Legislature is famous for doing that kind of stuff. But yeah, hopefully, as everybody looks at that, as you said, that may be additional funding. We have no clue yet how much, well, we know how much the state's getting, but we don't know how much is passing through to us as an LEA, I think that's, and that's going to be tough to know, because again, those funds, if I'm right, correct me if I'm wrong, have to be spent by 2023 or 2024, and there's a whole laundry list of things, especially for the third phase, is as you mentioned, that, you know, for catch-up and things like that, making buildings ventilation, things like that. So I just want to make sure people are aware that that 15 million doesn't mean it's new money. We're hoping maybe the 31, and we don't even know, and you're taking a guesstimate here, it's best you can do with that piece, so.
Yep. The guidance is not there for eligible eligibility, but the good news is, we did our homework. We're prepared for whatever they end up landing at. We have the list ready to go to get moving on those items. So 2022, last year or this year was, you know, it was tough for staff. In the prior year, we did not provide a salary increase, and there was just a lot for staff to go through in this year, and, you know, changing COVID protocols and winter storm had an impact, and not only on the district, but a lot of our staff members personally with damage to their homes. So staff was a primary focus as we were reviewing budget requests and going through the prioritization process. So the budget includes a 3% average raise, on average raise for all staff. We recommend rolling the $1,400 retention stipend for teachers into their base pay, and the benefit for that is that up until this point, the past couple of years that we've been doing it, that's not TRS-eligible. So by rolling it into the base pay, that increases their TRS salary and helps with retirement.
Quick question on that. So would the 3% average raise be on top of the 1,400 retention stipend?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that, so the 1,400 goes into base, then the 3% is added on top of that?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is it, it's, the way it's calculated is the 1,400 goes in, then the 3% is applied, or is the 3% number to the current base before this stipend is rolled in?
HR does that. So Rick, I don't know if you want to...
So what we basically do is we'll do a 3% into the base, and then we'll add the 1,400 in as well, which you'll see in the next slide.
So for the people at home who couldn't hear that, because Rusty's giving me that signal, it's, we take the base, we add the 3%, and then we put the $1,400 on top of that.
One other item, we are, we recommend increasing the basic life policy that all staff members receive from 10,000 to 15,000. It's one of those things that, at the worst time of, you know, someone's, you know, family's life, if, you know, we're trying to provide that as a benefit, but if we're not actually meeting the needs of funeral costs and things like that, then that's what the increase to 15 is intended to do. And then we just started the Umbalice D Alternative Health Plan last year, and we just want to make sure that there are no increases to premiums this year, and things look good at the moment. We still have a ways to go for our plan year, but we'll see how all that ends. And one thing we've learned through COVID is that mental health is, you know, a top priority, and we see a need to help with that. And so expanding our health and wellness clinics to better support mental health is also included. And then a comprehensive review of stipends, and that's another one where if we are, if we have stipends that are not fulfilling TRS eligibility, then we have plans to review all of those and make sure that they are eligible for TRS. So the biggest ticket item is always a salary increase, and so here's a little bit more detail on what that 3% increase model, how that affects the teacher salary step. So the 21, 22 number in the first column is the new increase, and then you can see off to the side in the yellow columns, the total increase, which each step experiences dollar amount, and then the on-average increase in the next column. And the total cost, you'll see it, 10, 10.6 million, and that includes also a factor of salary review as well. So in a later slide, you'll see a 10.25 number, and so the difference between that is salary review. And what this does for us, this investment in staff, is we noticed that we were falling behind a little bit in relation to the districts we compare ourselves to, and that's, you know, one reason is we did not provide an increase last year. Other districts were, did provide an increase. And as you can see, the top chart is where we were prior to the increase. So you'll see, you know, seventh place if you're, you know, ranking them. And after we apply our increase, the 3%, and rolling the 1,400, and anticipating the market doing increases as well, so all the other districts increasing their salaries on average 2%, it puts us right in the mix for the highest-paying districts. So it still puts us in sixth place, but you'll notice that 59,000, you know, second place is 59,670. So it puts us right in the mix. Yes.
I'm sorry, and maybe Rick needs to jump in on this. Could you go back, Mr. Beatty, one slide to the, I just wonder, I know that slide we just looked at targets first-year entry level, right? But if you look at this chart, so somebody here is, say, her five years, and they're only up to, on the bachelor's, you know, $14,000. I'm just asking the question, would it be, would be better off to put more money, because we talk about attracting and then retaining people, would it behoove us, are we getting a bigger bang if we would put more money into some of those later years, so that even if somebody looked at our district versus another, and the entry, well, we were, you know, behind on that, but you say, hey, look, you know, after you're here five years, we jump, you're going to jump up versus these other districts? Because, and then you really do want to keep people who are qualified. I'm just throwing it out there.
No, I mean, there's a million ways to do this. What Rick and I have been working on for the last couple of years is if you look at the far right column in the market position, is we'd love to see all of those people at least at 100%, but it's pretty expensive to do that. And so if you look at year five, they're at 101%, but if you go to year 19, they're at 98% of the market. So what we've tried to do in the past is shrink that a little bit, so that, but still stay in a market position with those early years where the salary is a little lower. So it's, you know, you have this much money and you can apply it to shrink the gap, or to the overall, we've really erred on the side of overall, and then little additions to the gap. But if, and if, Rick, if you're going to talk, you have to go over there by Billy, so that the folks who are watching online can hear. Thanks.
Because kind of in the same vein, the question would become for Rick is, do we notice any trends that at a certain years of service that we tend to be losing out on some of our teachers in the retention area? So is there, you know, after five years, we have a higher grouping of people that move to other districts, or is there any trends in that area?
Yeah.
So we've shown at the last finance committee with regards to turnover, and we have closed that gap. If you recall, when I presented that to you several years ago, that 1 through 10 was pretty high. We were losing quite a bit of teachers, to where on the latter part of that pay scale or that step, those steps, we were not losing as many. Where we are right now is it's like 50/50. So we've lifted up the front end, and we're retaining more of the zero to 10-year folks, but we're also, we're also lifting up the back end as well, so to speak, so that we can maintain those as well. So as Dr. Fagan had mentioned, we always try to look at that, the right-hand side of where our market position is in each one of those steps. And so the latter part of that, if you look at 22 through 26, in just applying a 3% and the 1,400, that market position would have been anywhere between 96% and 97%. We add an additional $325,000 to beef those particular ranges up to 98%, at least a minimum 98%. If we wanted to try to do it to all of those that are at 98% and try to get them to 100%, that bottom line right there, where we say, estimate the closing gap, we would need an additional $900,000 to do so. Okay?
And just to, you know, to, you know, make a point on that second chart, that's, you know, what we anticipate, or, you know, that may not be how it all falls out at all the neighboring districts, but that's kind of what we have to prepare and plan for. So we've talked a lot about staff and salary, and just, you know, to add some perspective to that, 85% of our entire budget goes to staff and benefits. That little sliver of 15% is how we make everything else work. And so, one more slide, what we're recommending in this budget package is 90% directed towards staff and enhancing compensation and benefits. So, you know, it's a little bit higher than that total average, just because we're trying to make up for lost time last year, but as you can see, overwhelmingly focused on staff.
Dr. Fagan, this question would be for you. If we're going to reduce the amount of money for the staff and increase the amount of money for staff, are we going to have to cut any programs? Are we not going to be able to expand some of the programs that we've talked about? How does this look to the end user, the student?
Well, I think that the programs that the board has really prioritized, and we have with the 504 facilitators, the CTE wheel, the things you're going to see are all in that orange 90. The 10% stuff is unfortunately things like property casualty insurance, and we're, you know, we've had a few floods and a few fires and a few freezes, and so, you know, those rates just go up. And then the other thing is, we're building, because we're a fast-growth district, and you put a brand-new centennial elementary in the mix, and your rates are going to go up. So the 10% slides are really cost-of-doing-business things that are pretty much unavoidable, because when we go through this, we absolutely prioritize the things that touch our students and that attract and retain our staff above all else, and then we have what I would call the unavoidable cost of doing business.
Okay, thank you.
What are the, in the other slide, we said 85% was to staff. What's in addition to the obvious six functions, functional areas that you would look on our P&amp;L or budget to add up? Are there other things that are in there? Because I was only coming up with like 75%, and I thought to myself, I've got to be missing some functions that you've got, have in your 85, and I just was curious, as you keep going down that sheet, what other ones that you would say that's purely staff as opposed to?
So the functional, the financial statement by function, there could still be supplies and things inside those functions. So function 11, you would just assume, and it is, that bulk is all instruction-based, but there still is supplies and, you know, materials that we're purchasing out of that function if it's directed towards direct instruction. So I would say it's, and I'll also mention that that number of 85% was taken over the past nine years, too, so it could fluctuate a little bit every year, just a little bit, depending on what happened in that year. Harvey may have been a good year, or a year where, you know, maybe the percentage swayed a little bit. But I'd say it's hard to just look at that one specific. Now, if we added object code into that, where we got away from salaries of, you know, 61 object code, then you could see the supplies at 63, you know, contracted services at 62. Those types of object codes would give you a further refinement to be able to nail that down, but that's what we did, is kind of filtered all that out.
Okay, thank you. I didn't mean to get into the weeds. I just was curious as to, okay, thank you.
All right. So we are preparing for that growth. Like Dr. Fagan mentioned, you know, we have new Autumn Creek Elementary. We expect 1,000 new students. We're preparing, we need to get started opening Middle School 10, so, you know, we would, you know, we need to hire the principal and bookkeeper so that we can get that building going and moving towards opening in fiscal year '23. And also, you know, preparing for contingency, we don't necessarily know exactly the growth, so preparing, giving ourselves a little bit of buffer in the event that we experience higher growth than we anticipated. And, you know, there's another layer to that virtual learning. We kind of have to see where that lands, so prepare for that as well. And then, you know, there's growth in special education, and so preparing by adding those teachers and paras to support special education. And some of those, you know, one specific area that we're trying to enhance is dyslexia campus support and adding positions for that. Some innovative innovation that we are allocating funding to, there, we expanded 504 facilitators, that's a secondary level, and so following up and completing that, you know, we're recommending 504 facilitators for elementary. And then adding teachers so that we can provide sixth-grade CTE exploration so that students can early on get exposed and find their interest in CTE. And then we are continuing to expand on Cardonics. That's our master scheduling software that we're really excited about further utilizing and implementing and seeing how that impacts our staffing further down the line, and providing a better scheduling service for us. And then Naviance, which is our, it's a personalized learning software that the counselors can use to, for course placement, and expand that program and add a module to help us with that scheduling on that front as well. So all in all, after, you know, we apply the special education, the dyslexia, you know, 504, CTE, everything that, campus growth, new Lakeland needs, you know, extra custodial support because it's a bigger facility. We're at about 150 positions right now, but, you know, I, we're still working on that and fine-tuning and looking at bus routes and how Autumn Creek and Lakeland and Quest factor into transportation needs as well. So, you know, there could be some fine-tuning on that number later on. So we are prioritizing safety. We're providing funding to enhance our radio system for police communication, looking at implementing police body cameras, and we have been doing, Nolan's team has been doing a great job keeping the buildings clean and providing funding to... and providing funding to maintain those cleaning protocols with new equipment and addressing our fire prevention system. And then also providing HVAC enhancements, including bipolar ionization, to better support our air system and clean the air of viruses. And the onsite shutdown is a nice feature because right now we can only shut down the outside air dampeners from central locations. So what this does is allow the campus itself to shut that down immediately, which we've just recently had a gas leak at Deerwood Elementary. So, you know, if there's a fire close by or that situation, the campus can immediately address that need and, you know, ensure clean, safe air inside the building. We are aligning our resources. That's the cost of doing business. These are, like Dr. Fagan mentioned, we have a lot of new renovation. We're enhancing our facilities, Charles Street renovation, New North Bell, all the buildings that we're working on. We already are insuring about $1.1 billion on our property insurance. So, you know, we need to protect those facilities that we've invested in. And that provides us, you know, the ability to recover whenever we have a winter storm, like in this building and Humble High School and AMS. So we are, and we're kind of, we've had experience on our claims. So Harvey, you know, we're feeling that now. And not only just because of our individual claims, but, you know, two hours away, Louisiana had three hurricanes last season. So, you know, the market is, you know, kind of, kind of adjusting their premiums to, you know, make sense. So, and if anything from this year has shown us through COVID and virtual how important technology is to the instruction process, that learning, you know, as a whole, we want to continue to devote those resources to be able to maintain the added technology we've purchased and further build on that. And the state has gone through a, and I guess they would, they call it an enhancement in the retirement plan. So TRS has kind of had a tiered approach of increasing some TRS contributions. And this year, some of those contribution increases are the employer contribution that will be impacted. So that's a significant add to our budget because it affects everybody, basically. So those little changes of a half a percent or they make a big impact, you know, when you apply that across the entire district. And continue to deliver software and to allow us to do business. So the moment we've all been waiting for, the actual dollars. So I mentioned that we prepared well last year. We planned for the worst. And so we carried a lot of capacity forward this year. So that $14 million, we had a great head start for this budget cycle. We expect 1,000 new students. That generates about $8 million more revenue for us. So we're working with about $22 million to fit every piece of the puzzle into. And over on the side, I've kind of laid out some of those items we've just talked about previously and tried to highlight some of those high-dollar impacts to the budget. And after it's all said and done, it's about $20 million. And one thing I wanted to highlight first and foremost is we actually have a cost savings. So we definitely need to give that its due. So by opening the North Transportation Center this year, we are going to save about $2 million and add that back to our capacity to reallocate to other purposes. So after it's all said and done, $20 million in this budget recommendation. And that leaves us with almost $2 million to carry forward for next year. So we have, you know, more growth. We're always looking forward. And I feel that excited about this budget and next budget. So I love that picture.
I love the picture. I do have a question. Go back to the last slide. It's a great picture. So I brought this up at our finance committee meeting again as well, but I feel that it bears a discussion at this meeting. So if our carry forward last, in this budget year, was 14 million and we're using all of that 14 million plus the additional that we expect to get with 1,000 new students to apply to reoccurring expenses, or at least a portion of that to reoccurring expenses. So we expect to carry forward 2 million this year. The question then would be, what impact will the decisions that we make now have on our 2023 budget?
And that's exactly, you know, we're trying to nail down this budget, but also not to lose sight of, you know, the next step. So the 2 million right now at face value, it looks totally different than what we were last year. But we are working on that process so that we can, and I can provide some of the thoughts that we have at the next finance committee meeting and kind of support how that 2 million factors in and how we can do all of the things that we want to do on this next slide next year as well. So, so Middle School 10, yes.
I was going to say, going back to where we were at the, Dr. Fagan, one question, what's 199-only impact?
So, either one, so when we give an increase, there are some, like Child Nutrition Services that pay for their own increases. And so we're not showing the dollars that they would pay in the raise. They would also get it, but it's not included in that dollar figure. Because that's only, that's our, they'll pay for their own, yes.
So that's 199 people?
No, that's the fund.
The fund, the fund number, right? Okay, that's, I want to make sure I understood that. And then, so the wheel, is that position, is that for all middle schools or?
That's all nine.
Okay, that's all, just to make sure, so we got everybody covered in that number. That's great, okay. And then why do we break out on special education staffing needs and then new special education positions? The first line above, that's new positions too, right?
It is, but those are increased minutes that are requiring increased time from teachers and paras. The next items are the 504 facilitators, which is a pilot we've run this year in the secondary and it's been very successful. So we'd like to build that out in the elementary. And this is additional dyslexia sport to campuses. So there's seven and a half folks that we would be adding to very particular campuses who have students who have dyslexia needs and they need additional support on campus. So we're just sort of pointing out the very specific laser-like approach that we're taking to building this budget so we can see all the pieces and parts.
On the first one, you got me when you said about minutes. So are you saying though, we have to have more teachers?
Yes. So students are requiring additional support, arted minutes?
Okay, that's clear. Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
And so to kind of piggyback on Ms. Toomey's question and the impact going forward, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's a lot of scenarios that are looked through as far as growth rates, as far as budget changes with the legislature and so forth. And our goal is always to pass a balanced budget with the hope that at the end of the year, we have a surplus, correct? And so by utilizing those various scenarios, while it looks like that we've got $14 million that we save that now is going into recurring expenses going forward, I think that's kind of where you were going is how do we make up that going forward? So if you look at the number of, the average number of increased students that we have each year, that increases the revenue. You look at property value increases from HCAD as we continue to lower our tax rate, but HCAD keeps raising those values. So we still get that growth in funding as well to offset that.
Yeah, yeah, and this is, you know, conservative estimate. And so if we do have higher growth than that thousand, then we'll make sure we capture that capacity to go forward to the next year too, so.
Yeah, by the way, I was picking on my colleague, Ms. Lamont Dixon, because she serves on the HCAD board, so. So did you have a comment or question?
Yes, I was going to go back, circle back to Mr. Gardner, Rick. So, and it's not a question, so you won't have to go to the microphone. But I was thinking maybe at the next budget workshop meeting that we have, I know you have worked really hard over, since I've been on the board over the last four years to try to close those middle gaps. So I think it might be nice for the board, the entire board to see. You used to have like a little line graph showing where we were, you know, where we are today and, you know, that progress. I think it would be good for everyone to see that because I know that's something that was a priority and I appreciate it, so, thank you.
And it's a challenging priority too because the market moves. So we'll think, oh, we're going to hit 100% on all these folks and we do. And then the following year, they're not 100% anymore. So Rick's always chasing that line to try to shrink the gap. But I appreciate that and we could do a line graph for each of the years.
Any way we could find that extra $160 per employee to move us back up to a tie for fourth?
He wants you to, right, he wants you to move the base salary and then he's going to have this conversation with you about compression.
That's right.
But then we don't know what other districts are doing. So you're chasing a moving deal and we may think, okay, we're going to get here, but then they do something else and so now we're no longer fourth. Yeah, you're always moving. But I think to Ms. Toomey's point, Mr. Sitton said, we just don't want to give the appearance that, well, that $14 million, it's like one-time money that we're using for ongoing expenses. And it's really not that.
No, it's recurring.
But it, and I understand, I mean, it gives that appearance that, wow, what are we going to do next year? Because we're not going to have that 14 million. You only have two maybe, you know, so that's, yeah, and I think we've.
No, no, everything, the entire 21885 is all recurring funds. So we're not spinning ourselves into a deficit. We were concerned about that initially. If you remember at the finance committee meeting, that we didn't know if, how things would come out because there was a conversation the state may require us to give back money, which is why we preserve the capacity. And 5% for us would be a lot of money. So in any case, this is all recurring dollars. This is not one-time and we're well within our budget.
And because Rick's over there, I'll use his words. He likes, that increase puts us within striking distance of all of the other districts so that we have the ability to make that move if we need to.
But I think this quarter over the years has made that commitment to try to find the money so that we can stay competitive with other districts. I mean, we realize that and I hope staff realizes that too, that we're trying the best to squeeze that money. And like you said, you know, 85%, that's where it is, you know, and staff costs, benefits, all those things. But it's important. So there's not a lot of extra sponges to squeeze, you know, for, so anyway. But it's great that we work towards that.
You know, and I know that that bar keeps moving because of everyone else. So, I mean, even if it's just the percentages where we used to be at 94%, it just kind of show what that looks like. I think that would be helpful.
And well said.
So I'll have to defer to Jamie. Her team helped me a lot with making this look really good, so. It could be. So that's on, you know, we're just continuing looking forward and making sure we're always prepared. And so that brings us to, you know, we just kind of discussed those recurring items. And then it brings us into the one-time items. And so a lot of what we laid out, there were some items in there that were one-time expenses. And so an option we have is to utilize our fund balance to address those one-time needs. And we have strong fund balance. Total fund balance is about $175 million. 102 of that is our 25% or 90 days operating that we set aside, don't touch. That allows continuous business, uninterrupted business. And then we have assignments and the board, along with finance committee and superintendent, we assign fund balance to specific purposes. And a couple of those buckets are emergency preparedness and fiscal contingency, capital expenditures, unbudgeted, non-recurring. And so we have about three mil, almost $4 million in one-time expenses in this budget that we are looking at fund balance to fund. And so the overall impact on the fund balance is, you know, anything could happen. So these are projections on what we think the fund balance will look like, that assigned fund balance. But, you know, we'll still be sitting at about 71, 71 million after we fund those one-time initiatives. But I will say that everything we've mentioned today, you know, I mentioned the Esser money. So a lot of the one-time, we have more cushion here that we're not reflecting in these numbers, but we feel confident in being, using fund balance in those scenarios because we have kind of a really good backup plan too. So at least half of that, 919, is, it looks to be Esser-eligible. So the big ticket item is we rolled the teacher stipend into base pay and that was recurring impact. And then to keep that going, then the non-House Bill III employees, we have been providing $500 retention stipends in May and December. And so this would keep that process going for another year. And this is probably the third slide you've seen with zero-based budgeting. But, you know, it really, I want to highlight it because we don't want to lose sight of everything that we did repurpose. We found money, budget managers, you know, reevaluated, looked at what they had in their budgets and they were able to, you know, fund really great things that they don't show up on this list, but, you know, because they're not a budget add this year. And so want to give those, you know, this is not an extensive list. This is just a handful of the highlights. But a lot of GT initiatives that were funded, you know, I'll say, I'll highlight unemployment. Unemployment has, although we didn't have a lot of unemployment this year due to COVID, unemployment fraud has hit everybody. And so we felt that impact. Our unemployment doubled last year and it'll probably double this year. Now, we were able to find, rearrange some funding and provide for that increase within the budget. But, you know, the one light at the end of the tunnel on unemployment is that hopefully after the state reviews everything and finalizes, we get, you know, that back. But that's a big hit and we were able to find funds within the budget to provide for that increase. So these are kind of the unsung heroes of the budget process and there's a lot of them. And it feels bad in the process because you are denying that request, but it's really, it's still going forward with current budget. So, you know, it's just another, it's more evidence how the zero-based budgeting approach really maximizes efficiency. It ensures that every dollar has intent and, you know, scrutiny behind those dollars. So taxpayers can feel confident that those funds are going directly to a good use. So that brings us to future steps. We went through a lot today. That's, you know, we made strides from last time. We have a finance committee meeting on May 4th that, you know, will look for recommendations and talk through the budget there. And, you know, we'll provide more detail and refinement at our May 25th Board Budget Workshop. And then ultimately, we're doing all that to get to our June 15th adoption so that we can get started on 7-1 with the new fiscal year.
Mr. Biddy, can you just go back to the fund balance slide?
One more? One more?
One more. Yeah, that one. Could you just give a little bit of color to some, some of them are self-explanatory, but so that people, anybody who might be listening or watches later would understand. Some example of, because it's some big numbers, 36 million for fiscal contingency, what we're trying to protect against there. And then the, you know, unbudgeted, non-recurring kind of things, just so people get a sense of, we're not just packing away money because I'm really concerned and we're all concerned about that legislation that is being pushed through about fund balances that could really put a whammy on us.
So this is what allowed us to get through Harvey. I would say, you know, to be able to double up high schools and put back KHS, was that nine months to, to get that back? You know, those kids back over in their, their school?
Not even. Yeah, it was till March. We put the, we put the KHS kids back in their high school in March.
Yeah. So, so this is what, that was a, you know, it takes time for insurance and FEMA to, to materialize. And so this cushion of fiscal contingency and, and these large buckets, that was almost a $50 million swing for us that we had cash on hand to be able to address those, those needs immediately. And then, you know, we follow through with the, the insurance process and FEMA reimbursement and, and we can put back that fund balance. We're not trying to spend and, but, but when we were spending it, we knew that we could, we would get reimbursement for those funds and so we felt confident being able to spend that. And, and, you know, the time was of the essence to, to do those. So that's what this allows to. Just for example, emergency preparedness was a $10 million assignment that we started out this year and that's down to four due to COVID and winter storm costs. So, you know, that, that, that's kind of how each one of those, those buckets work.
I would just add too, the $15 million TIRS is very specific. It can only be spent in that, that tax increment zone. And so that has to be a capital expenditure. It has to be in the city of Houston. There's all kinds of rules about that. So it's not just money just sitting there. And so really the money that we talk about for one-time expenses is that 18 million unbudgeted, non, non-recurring. And that's what this board has, has allowed this board to do North Belt early. That's what's allowed this board to do Guyam Sconzo Early College High School. Those were not fully funded in the bond. And so because we wait and we save and then we wait for a high priority capital expense and then the board allocates money out of that unbudgeted, non-recurring that we don't need for an emergency, that we don't need for ebbs and flows of cash and, and emergency preparedness. And $4 million for emergency preparedness is not enough. So it wasn't enough for COVID, wasn't enough for Harvey, wasn't enough. So the 36 gives us that little, that little space.
And, and I do want to mention that I think that through, through the advocacy work that, that we've been doing with Dan Huberty, he's been very receptive and I, I am no longer concerned about the impact of, of that particular legislation that you brought up. I think we've, we're getting there.
And Ms. Toomey, when we're in the middle of a legislative session and you say, I'm no longer worried, I get worried.
Well, the good news is it was 110 days. Now it's 180 days and we are well with, we are well under 180 days with our fund balance. And there's some conversation that there would be a carve-out for emergency preparedness. So we're in good shape, whether it's 180 days alone or 180 days with emergency.
And I don't get worried that easy. Takes a lot to worry me.
Mr. Sitten's right. Everything is at the conference committee level in the 11th and a half hour, so we'll stay on it till then.
I really like the direction that the budget is going. Thank you so much for everything that you've done. I just want to say, especially with the salaries and rolling that 1,400 over and tying it into TRS and the, the fact that we're going to be reviewing the stipends, you know, for TRS as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Mr. Sitten, back to you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Well, I want to kudo what you just said, Ms. Lamont Dixon, that, you know, the work that goes on behind the scenes, it's not something that, that the, the finance committee looks at one time. It's a year-long process. Mr. Beatty and his team, Dr. Fagan and y'all's processes, it really begins when the new school year starts. You know, you start looking at, you know, what do we need to improve learning? What do we need to improve our facilities? What do we need to, to do to, to really improve our quality of life, if you will, as an organization? And that starts really in August to get us to this point. So thank you all for your, your diligence and, and hard work because in the middle of all that, as, as Mr. Correa is trying to put together a budget going forward, he's still dealing with COVID issues from the past. So it's been a really, really different year, a really tough year, and I just want to send my kudos to the entire staff and the work that you've done to get us to this point.
Thank you so much for that. This is a, this is a team process from the beginning till the end. I think Mr. Beatty showed that, but we review every single request, no bit, no matter how big or small, and really work with individual budget holders to say, you know, maybe, maybe you could pay for that and, and other things. We, we move forward, but I appreciate the board's support of this, the prioritization of the staff, I think is an important one. They've worked really hard this year. It's been a tough year. We want to maintain that market position or be within striking distance, right, Rick? And, and I'm also very proud that we can, we can do the compensation piece, but also move forward the innovation. And I think that families love to see that. We're getting so much more precise in our, in our ability to know exactly how many teachers or staff members we need for all of those different things that you see. And that allows us to continue with the innovation piece, which is small but important.
Fantastic. All right. Meeting, moving to item 7A, is there any topics that we need to look at for our May board meeting that we haven't already discussed?
Mr. Sitten, I want to go back to the motion that I filed and voted on. I had somebody actually text me during the meeting and said, wait, we're getting rid of the masks for elementary school kids? And I just wanted to make it clear that our previous policy was that all elementary school kids 10 and under, masks were optional. And so what that effectively did is that all the kids, except for the vast majority of fifth graders, had, did not have to wear masks. It was optional. And so all we did was tweak that tonight, because we talked about it at the last board meeting. That's why we made the motion or I made the motion. And, and so now fifth graders, it's optional to make it consistent at elementary school. And the other thing is for the senior picnics and other things, if it's an outdoor event, people can socially distance, masks are optional on school grounds. That's what the motions that, I just want to make sure that was clear. People didn't get that. So these are tweaks. It wasn't, we haven't really done much with the motion that was passed.
Mr. Sitten, do we need to just clarify for our next board meeting that what we're going to talk about regarding protocols and masks so that there's not, not the confusion? Because I know we've gotten lots of emails, oh, this district's done this.
Gotcha.
And, and, well, not really. So we're going to address that.
Yeah. So, so just to clarify that at our May board meeting, as those of you that saw our last board meeting, I requested that an agenda item be put on the May board meeting for us to discuss this one more time. And that is to look at ending or making mask optional beginning for summer school going forward. You may have seen a lot of headlines of area schools, they are, they're already making those plans, but if you look at their wording, there's lots of caveats, lots of outs and so forth. So we felt it very important to wait until that May board meeting. And by the way, we don't give the superintendent the latitude to make those announcements without it coming to the board first. So our next board meeting is not until the second Tuesday in May. So at that, at that meeting, we'll be discussing that. It will not be to end the mandate in May. It will be to make mask optional and we'll discuss that as a board, but to make that, make mask optional effective at the end of the current school year so that we can go into the summer months or the idea is to go into the summer months with mask optional, see how it works out and moving forward into the fall. Okay? All right. With that said, nothing else on the table. It is 8:28. We are adjourned.